I'm going to call to order the special joint city council meeting between open space and the city council. It is six P M. Please write for the pledge. Item one point oh, public comments. Anybody signed up? No? Anybody want to speak? No? Okay, good. Two point oh, closed executive session. Two point one, section five fifty-one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney. City council will conduct a closed executive session for consultation with attorney. We got in an agreement with a five oh one C three for matters protected by the attorney-client privilege. We will be back in a minute. Six oh one.
I'm not sure which is, but no, I should not know.
Change returns into probation. Just do what they're doing. Not how it works. It's got to be given to you. And it's got to be transferred. As soon as I start with probation, people are... I mean, if they have somebody that'll figure that out, they're going to be... They just wanted to get a plan of... There we are.
Of course, I'm made up for everything else.
Yeah.
Did you pick them up?
Yep.
Okay, I was curious because I ran mine. Did you figure out what it had?
No.
So one of the trees at the berm has these... Yeah, you know what they are?
I wondered if they are something where you put like...
It's just one of those things that I see every time I read and I was like, I need it.
First thing I put on my side.
Thought maybe a bug catcher or something.
Yeah.
You're some golden...
Tacs. You can do outs. No, I did too.
Again, I'll give her lots of...
Yeah, right.
Kevin knows.
Do you? Do you know what I'm talking about?
No.
It's just like the last tree before the berm, like before you turn it up at the berm. And I saw it every day. So I asked John, he was like, no. So he just went to pick them up.
There were little large cars that have like a latch that holds it and there's holes. It looks like it's got like potpourri or something in it. I said, maybe it's something that attracts or attracts cows.
I don't know, but they were bugging me.
Terrorists, so it's like messages.
Great, well, I don't think that it... Well, you have... So the next three. No, three. So the next three and then Deborah's going to come again. So that's...
I'm sure I haven't seen it.
So that's what I think he thought I was going to say. I think I would... Like in the morning or whatever. Because I... Next week I have to be out. I'm not... And the next week I'm going on a conference. Yeah. That's why I saw it.
Some of those support to...
I think...
When I sent you those pictures, I just kind of put a little...
That's good. That's really good. Yeah, my... I could use...
Old enough to be your... Knock me down. Not unless I don't know what's going on in this picture.
Actually, it was...
So you would know what that was. You might see a picture of a tree.
I'll tell you what, I'll have a picture now.
He asked me for a phone call and pictures. Three, four pictures. So you've got this park place still. And then it said done. And so I just go... Because I was putting all my hard pictures and then sending you the ones that I thought... Me and technology just we fight over. And it's... But anyone that feels like the dream and show me how to... Well, I mean, I've seen one picture, but I've been thinking one of them is funny. So all afternoon, once a good time, I'll send you a picture. Bing!
Yeah.
Bing! This little phone's finally set up.
Sounds better than one of the collective.
I saw your...
All kind of...
Just nothing, you know, like a shot from the berm. It just looks nice. You can see that. The rain and the waterway. Just shines from a different place. It looked pretty good. Some say it's called a tree, so how many trees can it grow? But I don't know if it's, if it's someplace where we can just video it. A picture showing...
Like twenty-five cents.
How long do we do it?
I think it's got two pictures from different Chinese, Russian parts.
I remember we started a big hurdle and a couple weeks later.
I love this part.
Why are you spending time on parks?
Yeah. Parks.
Yeah.
I've never done what's there for the treasure. They have...
It's gotten more and more...
How are you doing, David?
Good, how are you?
Not bad. So were we supposed to reach out to you about setting up the other half of the committee?
I'm sorry, I'm getting with the remainder of some of you guys this week.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, wait.
I didn't get the... This is my operating. No. Oh. Think when you get access to that... And of course, that's just, that's operational. That's the middle age case. So we're natural probably.
We're going to close it down and have a party on the bridge.
I didn't go that way.
But there's this big show they're going...
Yeah, they have a church that went three pickup.
And I guess they've gone out to the different states to try to gather information. And so I think this is the first year that they're saying that the base...
I understood they were supposed to clear out more...
So there's two houses and you want to...
What we're seeing is they're taking on these waterways. That, you know, they filter the water way through, they catch the fruit. And they're just like straight...
The local district has changed their channeling strength in channeling. In some cases...
I don't know how many times for you.
Some of them they realize now.
Both of them. They can... And all these different... Like right there.
My business is...
I just thought today that the garden might be... What is it there? Yeah. Yeah.
They don't take forward down.
I emailed her and I asked if you'd do it if I put a non-home... Yeah, that would be great. Being able to have it there permanently instead of just seen or whatever.
Yeah.
They just don't come back together and take it away.
Clearing the... Is it margarite? Yeah.
Yeah.
It looks like he's trying to raise his...
Yeah. He can do, he's got proper boundary. Trying to stay out of the waterways.
Not yet. So I need to finish watching the... And then I guess...
They're down there looking at it. I don't sure. Well, I noticed this... I told you this. It's my... So maybe...
We saw... They're pushing it.
You know.
Is there anything...
Were you sitting, posting a few bikes under if I was like... With my hairy arms.
Pick the one that's... I'm actually, yeah, actually picked a...
Yeah.
So I got a first two words, train track.
Yeah.
But this...
The train tracker.
Yeah.
There's a track that's... They fixed it. That's one of the very...
They're taking the whole thing after they install.
It'll be the very end. So right now, we're claiming they have rights to...
I don't care.
But as soon as it goes further...
Who's in charge of... I mean, a poor road...
They work in the...
If you don't know what you're... You don't notice...
They're...
Yeah, he sure did, man.
We had a good guy. But then they just moved very...
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I should see that. It'll take about...
Very little concern about that.
That was...
Yeah, it's all... Tracks across the red book and all the south shore.
That's what, that's what we saw years ago. What I couldn't figure out is... Why it's a bridge? They put in ice pencil plates.
So will they take that out and then put a pad over it?
They get the sidewalk, it's surprising to be safe. That's what's... The sidewalk.
Oh, so that part of...
No, honestly, I just...
I guess that does not so excessive to it.
That they were going to allow us to...
I'll find out.
We were in Ocean, and it stalled because of the next phase. And they didn't want to...
That was going to be a quiet travel.
So that's going to be, until they finish with that, for five years.
Well, it'll be all nice.
Actuallly do.
There's also... So that's all.
We're going to track this. I thought we were supposed to go straight. I thought that was a straight path. Supposed to be straight down.
We heard that a while back.
Mayor told me that it was going to be straight.
There's a, there's already a road on Starwood from Starwood. That goes to the... That goes to the.
Where we meet. It's the same. Don't extend it. Or it's something.
Yeah.
I didn't.
Shut the whole house. It was really something.
Story. Sorry. Red was the. Which was.
It's a.
So.
So my house must have been here to fire. Which was.
Yeah. Well. I do plan.
Yeah, fair enough.
I feel like I should be. Yeah. Thursday.
So I'll follow.
You know, they.
What's your game?
I mean, it's that now.
Basically, they're just all those. They're all tied up. So there. Should be available. Otherwise, there's.
But that's never.
That's very rough. Especially.
So it's like interesting.
Yeah. So. Do I have? We were just. Just that.
It was special.
Yeah.
We're.
We made. Things.
No.
But.
Yeah.
Well, really.
I think one of our staff.
Well, I get on the. I'm the one, I'm the one. I'm the one that said. Then everybody didn't have to go home and tell. And then I'm the one that's. You brought ideas.
Let me stay. Get. And I almost thought you all were gonna do.
If they want to shake the. You know, put a note in. To discuss. To discuss. Don't you take. Change. Or do you?
We'll have an agenda meeting.
Read things.
Twenty dollars, six hundred. Sure.
No. Move the trash ten years. Next month.
Yeah.
Still.
How we do, how we like.
Four lights.
Yes, well, I'm. No.
Somebody's asking a question. I will.
So we have.
So you call.
By the hours by Friday. And then talking about. It's like the. From flowers to trees.
Yes. Oh, no, she, she actually. She. She did. She's actually. She's not sure.
She said.
Yeah, we're coming all the way. And it's.
Seems like there's a. Water. By the way.
No, we say she doesn't. She's like, oh, wow.
This is the great.
Did you want her to tell?
A little bit of change from Natalie since.
Yeah. We, you know, before. Natalie. She's very sweet. And then she's. I love her. Stephanie. She was so sweet and. And she still. She still. And she just wanted to.
I hope they let us recommend it.
Yeah, exactly. We get the.
That always. Yeah.
We check them.
So. So we. I don't know. This is.
Probably.
Do you actually like them? You're, if she was. I'm pretty sorry. I mean, Sean.
Sean came from.
Yeah, that's right.
Nick came.
I was like.
Nick helped me with. But.
It's.
I kept opening my ideas firmly. And finally. He drove. I can only hear that. Also not right here, but spin toward him and look inside. He's very tense.
Does he have to. Treat.
Chase versus for. Come on.
You guys were way that.
So we'll be way up there.
He got. It was all about three points. Also. That is.
Yeah, we need to do it. My activities are gonna be. Getting the itch.
Uncommon. Gummies? Now you're retiring. Now we sing along. Please. Yeah. Yeah.
So change is taking a whole different sense of.
Okay. I don't know if they're gonna. He's like, okay.
Yeah, so the. I never. That's your school. First year, three, thank you. Yeah, yeah.
We tried.
We're trying.
We tried.
So you learn the hard way.
I did that first two weeks.
And then they did give one little. That. I know.
Yeah. Same.
But you know.
Ten a hard. Yeah. This is. That's crazy. So.
In the March. So you're. Was.
Yeah.
Just. Yeah. Yes. I don't do that last year. Really additionally.
But I have.
It's like.
They just have to. Yeah. Has to be. And. Pocket works.
This one. It's.
All the difference. Let's see if we can. Change.
Usually. Seems like once it gets hot. This is.
Maybe you started.
As one person. Years ago. I'm foot.
Talking down the trail.
I wish.
I'm going. Sorry.
Down the trail and then just upon. They. She's like.
When you talk about the pond like. The one in my face. I'm going about. And you know.
Out of public works, it get on the trail.
You know, where we were. Was there. Go kill. I seen a couple.
Yeah.
Let's do it. So these posted.
The twenty third.
And wire. No, oh, wait. I'm just. Like a progress step.
There was a.
There is today. The market just sent me out. You have to leave the bottom. So we did.
Oh, we run. When we run the wells, we run it. When we exercise it, we do. Before we start. We're on the ground. Helicopter. So then it drains down that little drive. Makes the jacket.
There is. Some.
So I didn't feel it. It's crazy. I didn't have a camera. No. I did not have.
Sunshine. Trail's right here, right? So do you ever get with.
Oh.
Oh, you did.
And I'm, you're like, I can figure it out. I'm very, let's do that one. The same way. Figure out. What's.
She got me. There's a tree.
Yes.
She's coming. She may then can. She. She asked me. She said, I don't. But I said, I know. Four words. And then I have to. Say hi there. Yeah. I wish. On the circuit.
Yeah.
Must. Sure. It's been. Soft in a way. And I'm a policy. If. James. Question. Don't mean. We belong. Yeah. Yeah, it's been. That's my video for this week.
Please don't let it rain.
Alright, cool.
Frank.
Yeah. Chip water. We got three. Time hold. So. Yeah, they were chipped all that. She. Yeah. 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 This. Recently. But they got. It's too. It's not. Because. It's. They didn't know that. She. She. She was. She. Your. One person can't be missed. So. So of course.
Recent. Started.
They did another one.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's about. Very refined. I've been waiting. A lot of days. I'm so hungry.
That was my.
Part of it. For a year. We could have put. I believe. Sister. We're. They're just.
Yeah.
They'll have to work. Now. It's kind of. The alligator wouldn't get stolen on. And I guess this would just go far. Every three years. I remember. So. Yeah. It's like. There's. You gotta. I'm swaying. Yeah. You don't have to have. It's one of those ones. Turn it around. Can't turn around the other.
Maybe it's not there.
They'll probably cut the hole. On. You know, that was.
Good.
Nobody got there. Never. You have to be standing on a truck. They have the back truck right there. I thought.
I get that feeling. I get it. So when I was.
Three years. So you bought four.
I don't have. I feel that people have. Need. But. If they have. Yeah, if they have their own. That's because of the other one. So I got.
And I've looked at all.
Or like. Whatever. Like.
Yeah.
So. So.
Yeah, we can't really keep.
Totally. But yeah. I don't think.
I always. I even. I was.
Oh, that's. But I wasn't. And it's healthy because now. I can sit. I was.
We can.
Can. Should. You can. You see. But that's.
Let's do. Or. Turn. It's. Do. Do this. Do this. Do. Say. Your problem. I mean. Is there a good buy?
Yeah. They will. They want. But then they ask to finish up.
Yeah. Big.
Well, I got all. Pull this together. And word document. Looking at what was type. That's one.
Like the. See.
Well.
Oh. You know.
It also.
Yeah. It's. I think. Hundred word. I went to. I went to. Hundred. I went to. You have such a point. Work. Yeah. Say I went to a center on grace. Why she was greater too.
Oh.
Each year when we get. We hang on to. So we. We know the critiques. Yeah. Right. The. One of the things. Those. You.
It's there.
And you're. About every time. Yeah. Let's say. Say. There are. At a spot where. You. The. Can't. Here. Second. Your second.
Need to tell everyone. But. On one of the. That's.
Yeah.
It's kind of like.
Yeah.
This. That's. It's. They. They set. They. So.
It's. They produce. Yes. I don't like. No, no. I thought. It's more in. It's. It's. Tuesday. So. It's more. You should wait. Oh. Don't. That's on.
Well.
It's very.
Yeah. No. I. And. That's. And my. My wife. She. She. I. I. Little girl. I knew. She's.
Sample.
Right. She's. No. And. It is. For all of my. But it's.
So.
All. Please. So. So. So.
Working. Working. Just spoke retard.
I'm curious.
Sure. This is.
Did she have your tire lease as well? She. She was having her own time.
We don't.
Doing. Sorry. I'm like. Is she real support? Your. Your. What do you do?
You should try that again.
Wait for the TV. What?
Yeah. Hang in there.
Trish. She was trying.
It's.
That's even longer.
Yeah. What's. Tell me. Yeah. Yeah. Trish. And.
So far. Child. Yeah. It's a tower. It's. 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 I thought. This is like. All vacation. It's like. Sunday night. She. And ten. Time. Way down.
Now. But they.
To be doing. What's. Come. It's gone. So. Sunday nights.
Yeah. You know. To talk about.
But Friday afternoon. And then.
Four.
Another afternoon.
Yeah.
Forty years.
But.
Friday afternoon.
So that was. It's. It's a big.
Y'all on that cruise. Uh. I've.
So. She's. We could just.
First.
For. That's. Something.
Script.
It's. The. And. We can. Yeah. Whatever.
Next day we go there. It's.
This is how people be trapped. What they. They don't have to be worse.
Supposedly.
It'll.
Oh, my God. We know.
We tried to be. Like. We. Try to. Something.
We.
Tomorrow. We're not. More teams.
So. Because. I've never. You. You know. Whatever. Just go. Yeah.
I'm. I've. Never.
And if I. I. And. And. No one's a lot.
Yes. Yes. They're. Yeah. I know. It's. So. Small. Do. Yeah. Yes. I.
Well. Um.
It's.
First.
Yeah.
Where's the. You say.
She. She takes. So. Especially nineteen.
Yeah.
Five minutes. I don't know how far.
It's. It's.
Wow.
Yeah.
I mean.
You. Yeah. All you have to do is get on the website and. Give me a calendar. You pick a time. So. Like.
Yeah.
Six different. Six. You can. Click. Sign up. And that's it.
And she tends to.
The library. They have. Systems. That.
It is.
Library.
And.
The library. Just.
Yes.
You. Yeah.
This is. You. Yeah. All right. Just.
I.
Some. She. Quite handsome. Yeah.
You.
Now. We.
Almost. Hard. This. Yeah.
You know. Things. Okay. I think.
That's. Way to.
We.
Yeah.
And it's. We. We should have. That Tuesday.
Easy.
I think. Oh. Now. We should. Like. Pop. Or. Sinking. Or some. I think.
Whoever. Fun. It's. Exactly.
Yeah. Get to go.
Blue.
Nobody. Oh, my God.
Yeah. And he. He. Thank you. Very.
I know. I like. We. I. I. Yeah. I. I mean. That's where I'm saying. We should have. Pop left. Or. Think about it. Till two.
Yeah.
I mean. Attitude. I.
It's.
I. Five minutes ago.
So.
It's. Doesn't.
Right.
I was. About that Tuesday. I.
We.
That's all.
Just. We've. So. Are you saying?
It's. We. Could have had.
Yeah.
She. Her.
And. We've been across. We. House.
We'll. Find out.
I. We haven't.
Whatever. You. Workshops. I. Was. Too. Really. It was like. But then. You know.
All right.
Exactly. It's. They. Exactly.
The.
Yeah.
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 There are so many. Water.
I've not.
Yeah. It is.
I feel like.
Yeah. Go. Look at the TV.
Oh.
It's really cool. Like. Yeah. Makes doing all the. It's.
Where's Tom?
He went to the restaurant.
They both did. Why we're missing Jackie? No, why missing Rob? Counsel has returned from executive session. No, no action has been taken. Moving on. 3.0 open session, 3.1. Consider to take all appropriate action on a recommendation by Open Space and Trails Committee on the recommending that Open Space and Trails Committee supports current Coastal Garden redevelopment plan as put forth by the Carruthers Coastal Garden Task Force Two and further supports the timely execution of a memorandum of understanding with Carruthers Coastal Garden 501(c)(3) to carry on the I move to deny. Second. Open for discussion. We talked about it in there and, and counsel wants to give you guys all the leeway that we can. We have, we have an issue with a couple of the, of the issues like procurement and things like that. But we want you guys to take the Carruthers property, see your vision, move along, and do it without the 501(c)(3) as a management group. It's, it, to me, it's semantics. Whether it's a management group or a 501(c)(3). According to all the attorneys, you still have to meet our procurement requirements. You still have to come to counsel every time your expenditures are up. But we want this project to move forward with your vision. Okay? We're excited about it. The 501(c)(3) just doesn't work because of all the requirements that the city is going to have to jump through to get an agreement. And, and we've talked to a number of, of different attorneys and they're all coming up with the same thing. There is some ramifications on taxes, on bonds, and things like that, that I don't think we were in, they were in the original agreement that we sent over that nobody liked. So what I, what I think is happening is, you know, we're, we're being handcuffed by legalities. And we want it to go forward and we want everything just the way you have it to go forward. You can be in control of it, you just have to go with our requirements of procurement and everything else. And like I say, it's semantics, whether it's called a 501(c)(3), whether it's called a management agreement, whatever. Okay? We're not trying to stop you, we're not trying to handcuff you. We want the project to go forward. And I think that's what counsel has decided. So is, is, I, I wanted to explain it to you that way. In that counsel's not trying to be negative about this whole thing. I think everybody on counsel is in agreement that this is what we want. We like your vision.
Dirt moved. Let's get going.
Yes, I just want to let you know about I mean, we do look forward to
Open Spaces and Trails coming forward with their suggestions.
And, and your guidance, your counsel, you are the experts in this, you're the people that, that are next to the ground. But as Tom said, I mean, all the Ts that have to be crossed, the Is that have to be dotted, the prayers that have to be offered and answered just doesn't make it work out. So what I'd like to do is let's, let's get this behind us. Let's get to the workshop. Let's get the grading done. Let's get the trails in. Let's get the planning done. I mean, it's, it's that time of the year.
I brought up the, the agreement that all these other conservatives have, like, you know, different parks and different things like that. And all those, they, all the lawyers listen to that and they go, that's great, but they're, they don't have a bond on them. They weren't bought with bonds or privately owned. Because that was my big question. So, you know, that's how I, I just like, hey, all these other groups have used this two or three page agreement. Why can't we? And that's when they came back with, well, this has a bond, the others don't.
We're going to go into a workshop in a minute. It's where can, 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 can we, since they're part of this, can we not ask their opinion? Go ahead.
You're saying we would come to you, like, the insurance money that's remaining, would we have access to that?
It says, it, it, that insurance money has to be spent, that insurance money has to be spent on the park.
Right. Would it be a minimum amount for each thing that, that we want to put in the trails? Okay, that would be a large amount. But we want to buy some plants, we want to buy some, whatever.
Well, really, everything, everything meets, we can look at putting a minimum amount on there or maximum amount on there before coming counsel. But I think, I think pretty much, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, what, what are the requirements to, can we put a minimum amount? Or does every penny have to come through cap, through?
I, I thought, based on the discussion in there, that the city was still obligated to stick to their normal purchasing
We could, we, but couldn't, couldn't we have a, a, yeah, I don't want to call it a slush fund, obviously, but couldn't we have petty cash? Type of thing?
I, I really think we could do this, like, if you're going to say that we want to buy plants for X and we want us, you know, a hundred thousand, well, just to pick a number, twenty-five dollars. Or five thousand dollars for coastal prairie grass. And that we're going to plant it in the park. Okay, fine. So we could approve five thousand dollars for coastal grass. You go to buy the coastal grass. It's four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That two fifty would come back to the city. But you would have that discretion to put it in your pocket, go to the store, and say there, you know, that's what it's for.
My, my understand, excuse me, my understanding when I asked specifically the question about who controls the money and how that flows. Any money that is given to an entity that operates exclusively on city property, that money is still subject to audit, top to bottom. So the, the city would have to accept an entity, whatever it was, to be a hundred percent responsible for that and maintain all of the audit guidelines that the city has. And that could be problematic. Because a violation, you know, violation, that sounds red. An error in accounting by an entity such as we're talking about reflects on the city. Because it's part of the city money. And for that reason, I wasn't real keen on the idea of that. There, there's a process out there to facilitate those small purchases like that. We can figure out what that is. I just want to see ground broken, I want to see trails put in. I want to see progress. Let's just get past all this and get moving forward. The money's there, let's get it allocated.
I have one other question. As far as being able to accept money from, I don't know if we would be able to get grants and different things.
No, you, you can go solicit grants. The one thing I caution is that a lot of the grants have a shared cost. In other words, a fifty-fifty or something like that. So you, you can't obligate the city to a shared, shared grant. So, so you got to be careful when you're going after these grants. The second thing is that, you know, going to the county or Rotary or something like this, the city may already have an ask into those entities for a different project. And it'll look poorly on us if we're going after, you know, ten different grants at the same time. You know, they, we're limited to sometimes what we're going after. So, so if you're going to go after a grant, please ask us. You know, before you go after it. We're not trying to limit you. We want you to get grants. You know, but, but we need to be careful.
What about donations? Is there anything that keeps a donation from?
No, no, donations are fine. But again, those monies will be controlled.
The issue that I think that was brought up here about, we, we already have a proposed budget in place. Some of those numbers have to be, and it's even phased. I think asking for a hundred dollars twenty-five is not going to be an issue. We've got these big chunks going through and about
Well, that's right.
So I don't see this little stuff being a problem. The one thing that you just touched on, Mayor, is in order for the 501(c)(3) to go out to foundations and endowments and request money, for the most part, and there's exceptions to every rule, but a lot of these big corporations and private entities don't like to give money to cities. And they're like, well, what are they going to do with it? Well, they might go buy tractors. They're bowing with it, but they're going to mow the city. So we would, and we'd figure out a way to do this. We need to have something in place, some kind of agreement with the 501(c)(3) and C.C.R. So that Rhonda is actually our head grant person, that's what she does, she's to work for the Center for Nonprofits. And so that she can go out and say, yes, you can give us a hundred thousand dollars. Our mission statement says we are focused fully on Carruthers Coastal Gardens. That is our only focus. All of these funds will go directly into this project. If we tell them, oh, yeah, we're just going to get this check to the city and, you know, I'm sure it'll turn out
It's going to have to be through the city. But, but again, it's, it's a matter of what you call it. I mean, if you call it the Coastal Gardens
Yeah, we can maybe, you know, Friends of Bob
Organization, whatever you call it, it's semantics.
Right.
And so, and so if you come, if you come to, if you get a grant, just, you know, and if you need help with it. I mean, a lot of these, you know, I go out for grants all the time.
We are, of course, or not, and, you know, and I've gotten, you know, quarter million dollar grants from, you know, David Cameron, he used to sit in that chair right there, the Cameron Foundation. We've received some grants in the past. We would certainly never go after a matching type grant without a, already, you know, the city. But we cannot even go ask for money if we don't have something in place for the city. So that we can say, yes, we're taking, and even though, I'm sorry, even though we're taking the money, we just got to figure out how these people that might give us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars don't think that we're just passing this money along to the city for you guys.
So if, if you are a tax exempt LLC, you know, it, that's the same thing. You know, as long as you're tax exempt, you can go after these grants.
But we just, but we have to make a promise where this money's go.
And, and that's correct.
I'm just saying, at some point, we're going to have to sit down and knock out a few details.
Well, there's, no, yeah, all I'm, yes, all I'm saying is there, there isn't going to be a formal 501(c)(3). Sir?
I actually, I have a question for Tom, the attorney.
Sure.
If the 501(c)(3) is an advisory body and money from the city does not flow through them, if they receive a donation to the 501(c)(3), written to the 501(c)(3), does the city have any involvement with how it's spent? Just because it's being spent on city property?
No.
For example, if they get a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to put, to buy plants, to fill up the whole garden, okay, they buy the plants they want to, it's not city money, they got it under their 501(c)(3).
The, the city's involvement would just, is, at, at that point, is, is purely how it affects the city's property. So if, you know, if, let's say the
Yeah, to your point, Rob, it's perfect, because, yeah, we would just, we would certainly ask permission when we're going to do something on our own. It's like, hey, guys, we got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy plants, everybody on board with this, this is cool, and everybody absolutely gets to plant.
And, and that's just, the advisory council piece is saying, okay, we want to buy these kind of plants. By the way, we haven't wanted to do it. The city says, you, you go, girl, get it done.
The only, the only thing with that is you got to keep good records because you are still representing us. And if he gets audited, they're going to want to see your
And we have legal responsibility.
You know what I mean? That's the only thing. So, yeah.
That came up in that with, that they were real big about that, so that was a big deal. But
Yeah, yeah, we file our taxes, we do the
Right, I'm just making sure.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Could I have, could I?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so just with regard to the insurance money, that has to be spent through the city's procurement rules.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Beyond that, if we were to get outside money, then those don't fall under those procurement rules?
No, we do.
Now, just to clarify, like, you're going to go out for a grant. And so you're going to go out for a grant for a greenhouse. And you're requested twenty-five thousand dollars. In order to build that greenhouse on the park, it would have to meet city building codes, all the permits, you know, just like that. So, and prior to going for the grant, I think it would be good to say, hey, we're going to go out for this grant for this, and this is where it's going to be placed, yada, yada, yada. So when the money comes in, boom, it's a done deal. Instead of saying, you know, I'm going to go for money for a casino and then I'm going to put a casino down there, it probably won't work. I'm sure.
Certainly, I think we
Be more enjoyable than a greenhouse.
If any of this, if, if this kind of provision we have, and proposals and, you know, behind us to put forward, we wouldn't do that without advising counsel and
Well, it's all in this together, we just got to pick up the rope together and pull the same way.
Yeah, we don't, you know, we, we, we've been down a couple of rough paths here the last couple of weeks, and we don't want to go down there anymore. So let's get it done. All right, we have a motion in a second before we go into the workshop. All in favor, oh, well, well
Any more discussion?
No, what was, can you repeat your motion? It was motion to deny.
It's motion to deny.
So we're voting in a negative, guys. So all in favor of the no vote, raise your hands. Okay. It's unanimous, thank you. Okay. Moving on. Oh. Got to open our meeting.
All right, so at this point, we will begin the joint workshops, workshop session with our Open Space and Trails Committee, starting at seven fifteen.
Thank you. 4.1, discuss the presentation and update on CIP, number P20, Carruthers Coastal Garden East Track. Master plan for the east track and agreed elements in a plan including trails, berms, drainage, irrigation, electrical, and future building sites. You have some attachments herein. And, you know, we have had, we've had some discussion based on the cost of the drainage and the amount of drainage. And I think there was some disagreement, adamant disagreement, in the, in the cost and the type. And I'm going to throw out a question. Looking at that plan for the trails, seems to be a little complicated and a little, maybe, in my opinion, overkill. If, if there was a single trail down the middle, including the loop that's at the, at the bay, would we not eliminate a lot of the drainage issues if the trails were the high point? Because then we could drain from the high point north and south. And eliminate a lot of the drainage issues that I think were causing by putting those trails in like that and encapsulating those triangular pieces into a lake. Into actually seven lakes.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate, Tom, you're trying to reach a compromise here, and we, we talked about that. One thing, the triangles or the planting areas there are actually berms, so they're higher. This particular drawing does not show, I'm sorry. And I'm sorry, I've got a cold in both my ears, I can't tell if I'm whispering or screaming. This doesn't show, one of the other ones shows the drainage plans, where it shows the swales going down the south property line, it shows swales going down the north property line, and it shows everything going in that direction. So I don't think it's as big a problem as, as it may seem, and I know
Well, I think, well, I think one of the problems that I've, I've seen is that we don't want the water draining across the trails because they wash out
Yeah.
And, and things like that. So we would prefer to have the trails as the high point. And, and then, and if we were just going flowing north and south from a singular center trail, I think we could accomplish a lot less drainage issues. And then, and then your beds can be anything you want. You're limiting yourself as to where your beds are going by putting the trails in like that.
Well, it's done purposely so that you can get access to all sides of the beds and the planting areas. And so that it looks differently walking down one way. And it's just, it's, it's a wholehearted effort as opposed to be a halfhearted, you know, you helped design the new Mark Riederville. If I said, let's not make it quite so fancy, Tom, let's go and build it out of, you know, shipping containers. You know, nobody will understand, it's just, it, it looks pretty.
Well, I, I understand, I'm, I'm trying to mitigate a lot of the cost of that drainage. Again, we're going, you know, we've got a design from the engineers right there. It, it, the numbers are still, in my opinion, you know, high as to what we're trying to achieve here. We want you to have money left over to do what you want to. And, and make it a little more flexible by, you're going to have planters or, uh, plants on both sides and
Well, I, I don't understand what you, when you're saying make the trails the high part. Looking down into the planting areas?
Well, I'm not talking about, you know, ten feet tall, I'm talking about
Because then we do create
Two feet, two feet. But if we're going north and south to the swales, then I'm not seeing how
Well, the, the drainage plan that actually NorEx put together does show swales going down the edges of the trails, and it actually drains just fine. Once again, the property from where you see the gray box up there where the house used to be, down to water, is approximately, it's a little less than a thousand feet at that point, and it drops fourteen feet in elevation. Getting it to drain by cutting as opposed to filling isn't a problem. So honestly, in the work that NorEx did that shows that, it's really not that big a problem. I would like to sit down and once again
It's not, it's not so much as if it's a big problem, it's a big cost.
Well
And that's, that's what I'm trying to mitigate. I mean, that's up to you. I, I, I'm not going to get in your business. I'm just saying that I was trying to get it so we're
And I appreciate
It was more affordable.
I, I, I hear what you're saying.
Because, because the numbers are still going to be over a hundred thousand dollars and maybe one fifty, and you didn't, you had a problem with that. But since we have to go through procurement and we can't get your buddy to do it, then
Well, actually, we can get my buddy to do it.
Well
He's not my buddy, he's another contractor out there, so. He's willing to come back and bid it with around whatever parameters. But the only difference, if you recall, when we got into that big discussion, was that he bid not including moving a quarter million cubic feet of soil. He did it just doing the dirt work, using the dirt that was on site. The other two contractors, obviously, it costs two hundred thousand dollars to move that pile of dirt from Public Works to here. So if we kind of start with that, if we can keep, keep it under a hundred thousand
Well, as long as, as long as we can, you know, as long as he bids plans and specs, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, we just need to make sure that this time our RFPs are correct. And we can get on the same page. And that's how we got off on the wrong foot before, is when the RFP went out, in my humble opinion, incorrectly, and I pointed that out and, and just
What was wrong with the RFP?
Okay. What was wrong with the RFP and what happened last time is not going to help us move forward.
I agree.
So let, let's leave the past in the past.
There you go.
If we need to submit a new RFP to the engineers, then, then we can do that. But at this point, NorEx is here to give us a presentation. We have a plan that has, that I saw the first time two and a half years ago. Let's hear what NorEx has to say and if it, and, and go from there. But leave yesterday, yesterday. We're moving forward, I want to see something done.
One of the things that causes me to what I have, one of the things that causes me to want to have more of a divided area and not just, I don't see it as all just one type of planting. It will be, there will be areas that will be more manicured and other areas that will be wilder. And so because of that, trying to keep them separated by the paths and, anyway, that's, that's the main reason.
Go ahead.
So trying to minimize cost, why do you need a drainage plan? Why can't you just let it flood? The trails don't degrade in floods.
I got some pictures that I took after our last council meeting. And I live in Seaside, and my rain gauge showed an inch and a half of rain. The next day at noon, it went down. I'm going to pass these out, and you can see what it looks like.
Yeah, but my question is, even if it's a lake, what, what's, why is that a problem?
It dries the next day.
Huh?
It dries the next day.
I mean, why can't you just let it flood when it rains?
That's a good question. We
We can.
Also, just to know, right now, and I, I don't think a lot of people realize this, when the guys came out to do the demolition, they didn't remove the tennis courts like they were supposed to, and they, they built a land bridge through both drainage swales on the north property line and south property line in order to get their excavator across. So there is a huge dam right there where the tennis court used to be that goes from property line to property line that is literally a dam, and nothing gets past it.
Folks, we, we have two separate engineered plans, and I think we're going to hear a third tonight, that people smarter than I am designed to drain properly.
Right.
So let the past be the past, and let's move forward and figure out what we need to do to get berms built and flowers in the ground.
Let's, let's
My point is, the trails flood this week's rains, you had many areas on our trails that were under a couple inches of water. Why can't you just continue to do that at Carruthers and save all that?
There will be areas at Carruthers where the trails are under a couple inches of water when it rains.
Right.
I mean, my lawn is under a couple inches of water when it rains.
So why do you
It happens when it rains. So it's not, I don't see that as an issue. The drainage, we have a plan for that, we talked about it earlier today. The engineers are here tonight, tell us the best way to do it. Let's figure out the best way to do it instead of
I don't think you need an engineer to tell you if it floods out of there, you just, you go out there and look at it. But here's my point, you don't have to spend money. That's spending money that you don't need, and they're trying to tell you, they don't need to spend that money.
I, I, I understand that perspective, but since it's over fifty thousand dollars, state procurement law requires it to be engineered, correct me if I'm wrong. Over fifty thousand dollars, state procurement law requires three bids, all bids have to be bonded, and it has to be an engineered RFP. So we don't have a choice in doing the engineer, it's over fifty thousand dollars, and it's city funds.
Okay, so I, I have, I have a question. Where did the original request come to drain it? How, how did we come about draining this park?
It's been drained, it's been draining
Hang on, hang on, I'm not asking you, I'm asking somebody.
It's a capital improvement project in which we were going to put trails. And it's fifty thousand dollars plus. We went into engineering because it's a public, as mentioned earlier, it's defined as a public works, and so you have to have an engineer draw up specifications. And that didn't from what the plan was. Part, part of this item was to determine if everyone is on the same page as of the plan. And I guess that would pose the question, if the whole thing floods, then is that plan with berms, planting berms? Or just trails?
My point is, it doesn't matter if, if the berms flood, the trail floods.
Our, our initial concept as we were taking the Task Force Two drawing, which had the berms in it, so is, is your plan, there would be no plantings, it would just be trails?
So you'd have your trails and you'd plant your trees and flowers, and then a big, heavy rain, if the whole thing goes under for a day, you don't have to spend a hundred thou, whatever
So there would be dirt movement, by who?
That you'd
Who, who would move the dirt?
You wouldn't, you wouldn't, you mean to build the berms?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, that, that I don't. Is the drainage plan, the cost is building those berms, that's what's in the money for the drainage plan? I was just, my point was, don't, don't spend it, don't do any of these engineering studies because you don't need it to drain. Just let it rain and fill up.
Yeah, I think it just gets back to what the, the plan is. Is everybody on the same page of what the master plan is? Is there plantings, is there just trails? That's what staff is trying to see. If there's a combination thereof and there's going to be dirt moved, that's when the engineering gets triggered.
Yeah, see, there, there was, and that's where I'm, why I'm asking this question. There was a plan that was brought up, it was pretty pictures, it was, you know, renderings and the whole bit. And to, to make that rendering a reality, there needed to be drainage. Because when we're looking at that, at that park, I mean, there's a lot of places that hold quite a bit of water. And so, again, if, I, I'm all for planting water, putting a water feature in and letting it go. I mean, you know.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want the place flooding and being unusable, and it's possible to do the drainage plan. We're on the right track.
Okay.
Let's, let's not get distracted, we're
Just simplify what we are looking at on the screen.
Okay. I guess, I guess we bought into, I think counsel is saying that they, we bought into I guess, I guess we bought into, I think council is saying that they, we bought into a pretty, pretty looking picture, which Really probably wasn't a hundred percent what we were looking for. Right?
Right. I think, you know, it is also, there's a tension in here between the word garden and the idea nature center. And that tension is in the task force two final report, which talks about This park being distinctive in that you've got six different natural habitats you can go and enjoy in one park.
Okay.
That's pretty amazing. Now, that, most of that plan involves the prairie, the coastal prairie segment. Which has quite a lot of flowers in it. But coastal prairie is low lying, it's sodden some of the time. Thoroughly wet is actually fine for coastal prairie plantings. So, I mean, it's very possible, the divergence from that plan To get that habitat well represented. Now, um, tree planting Requires a little bit more thought because some trees are not going to do well when they get too wet. But I mean, I agree with you, simplification of the structures that are going in Is an easy way and drainage north and south into existing swales is an easy way. I don't see that there's a big problem there. They're just a little discussion.
Again, we're looking to this board for their suggestions. If, if you need drainage, tell us you need drainage. If you don't need drainage, tell us you don't need drainage. It sounds like you guys aren't in tune with each other. So one or the other. What do you need? You don't need drainage?
Stop. Yes.
Okay, wait, wait a minute. Could, I guess that's where we get, where my confusion is coming in.
We're not building a lake.
But it's basically that we're trying to do that.
So I disagree, Jesse. I don't, I, if that drainage is going to chew up all the money, I don't think we
There, there's a way to come to a compromise where we're not spending a quarter million dollars, but we're spending more than fifty and I think that's what we're trying to come to right here. How much is to the minimum necessary to make it, you know, usable?
Well, then we need to hear from Norx because they've looked at the plans again.
Yeah.
They've come up with, they've come up with a couple of alternatives. They're still not getting under fifty. I'll tell you that right now, but you're welcome to come up and make that presentation.
Mayor, before we get to Norx, can I say a couple of things? Let me kind of digress back to I think where, how we got to where we're at and what Norx was engaged in doing, just real quick. So what happened? We went, we all bet and the plan was approved as a concept plan. We took this concept plan and we sent it to Norx. And from staff's perspect, perspective, we asked them to come up with an engineer design that would meet the parameters of what's in that picture right there. And so they, they went through and they created the engineer drawing that we presented at some point in time that, that nobody was in agreement, so we needed to move forward with. Where we're at now, I feel, is we have an engineered plan that needs to be modified and tweaked. And the, the general concept of that plan works, but we're trying to reduce costs. And to introduce Norx, because that's what he's going to present to you guys in a few minutes, is he went back through and we asked him to go back through and create three concepts where He, he, he shows their original concept. He's going to come back and show a reduction in some drainage and the elevations of the berms, Which was something that was in dispute at one point in time. They felt they were too high. We were bringing in too much fill. It was going to cost too much money. So they, he's going to show you a reduction, what his estimated cost of that's going to be from four foot to two foot to one foot. And so he's going to kind of present that to you guys. But I think at this point in time, we have an engineer plan. We just all need to work together and sit with that plan and figure out what we want to cut out, what we want to keep. And then at that point in time, he can modify that plan and then we can move forward with putting an RFP back together, Sending it back out for bid and get real prices so we can move forward with the project. But with that, I mean, again, I would just
Again, if you have something under a foot, let me know.
Want us to overhear the microphone?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah.
All right. Well, glad to be back, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having us. Open Space and Trails, I think it's the committee name. Glad to be back. It's a, it's an exciting project. You know, we're actually having a little bit of fun with it because it's, you know, y'all are working hard trying to, trying to get it solved. So hopefully we can be constructive here. Was listening for the whole meeting just to give some feedback on, on what I've heard so far related to the plans and possible modifications. You seem to be at a bit of an impasse on what you want to do still, which makes it hard for, for us, the engineers, to give you that final plan. So you know what I'm about to present is still based on the original plan With the zigzag figure eight trails and the berms and the original concept. We took that and we scaled it back three or four times to Give you some cheaper options to contemplate, but we still are looking at complete positive drainage, trying to eliminate standing water and You know, not taking any major drastic deviations from that plan. So if you elect to do that and leave fifty percent of the property or wetlands, That's not considered here. So just keep that in mind when you see these prices because we're still working off the original layout. Can y'all make that full screen?
Presentation.
There's a full screen.
At the bottom. Can't do it. Yeah, can't do it.
I can always just
We do know what we're doing. We just don't know how to operate a PDF.
We need a different PDF.
We need a different computer. There we go.
All right. So there's, there's really two, two things to discuss here. We have a summary page at the end with all the costs to make it, to make it easy to look at. Everyone's familiar with the layout. There's six or seven berms of, of an undetermined height at this point with some, some lovely trails in between. So that's what we did on the original design. We bumped them up to four feet to try to match the renderings. And then over by the bay, there's the loop. That area of the property drops down considerably. On the original design, we brought in a significant amount of fill, about twenty thousand dollars worth. To bring that up to make it ADA compliant on the trails, right? That is, you know, the best and most correct engineering Application to make this trail a typical city government park project, right? That, that you would expect, you know, it's very well manicured and has nice slopes and all of that. We did three other options where we eliminated the fill by the bay. That was a significant reduction. So that, that, the tip of the park out by the bay Is going to essentially follow the existing grade, probably not ADA compliant, except for Your two committees and the, the city to decide. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's acceptable or not. That's for, for your lawyers to determine. But that portion can be eliminated and then we reduced the berm height from four to two feet and then again from two to one foot. So you can, you can imagine progressively as the berms get taller and you bring in more fill by the bay, the park will get more grandiose and follow your renderings. A little hard to see here. Aaron, if you could go to the last page and we can kind of summarize the cost.
I agree. Alex, before we do that, can we take, can we just, can I just point out a couple of things?
Can I, can I get through this, this cost here just to get the, get it out? This is, I'm trying to do this in like a minute or two just to Get all the information out and we can discuss. So for the original plan with the maximum amount of fill and the, the four foot berms and everything is really, really nice. We estimated a hundred and ninety thousand. Your bids that you, you received from your first RFP process were two hundred and forty-three and three hundred and twenty-one. We, we looked at a lot of things in, in the bids that Brian did and, you know, we used some contractors we know. We looked at the biz that came in and we use RS means, which is a published engineering Data source to estimate projects. It's the gold standard really for, for estimating projects like this. And we came up with a hundred and ninety thousand. You have an interesting situation here because you own a bunch of fill on a property in Seabrook. But you still have to pay someone to go get that fill and move it and they have to mobilize the two sites. So that's a little, a little difficult to estimate and that, that's something that may have been contributing to those higher prices. Now, if you go down this list, if you remove the fill by the bay by itself, you're down to a hundred and seventy thousand. If you lower the berms to two feet and there's no fill by the bay, we estimate it's going to be closer to a hundred and forty-two thousand. And then if you go to one foot berms and no fill by the bay, we're estimating a hundred and thirty-one thousand to do all of the work. We took the two bids you received and we scaled them based on the quantity adjustments and you can see the resultant prices there. And they remain thirty to forty thousand dollars higher than what we would expect. But that RFP process was, it was unique. I mean, that was a difficult thing to try to estimate. It's a, it's a unique project. So It's, it's going to be, it's going to be hard to get the cost down under a hundred thousand, I think, to do the existing plan. Where you have the, the trails that weave in and out and you have the berms and to not significantly alter the existing height of the property. That is something that was brought up, been brought up by the committee. Yes, there's a lot of fill from The back portion of the property, not a lot of fill. There's a lot of slope. There's a lot of drop, right? You could cut it out. You could make it drain straight to the bay. You could make it drain north and south. You're still going to be touching a huge percentage, percentage of the property. It's still a per volume cost to do that. You still have to haul that volume off. So Aaron, Aaron is here with me tonight. We've looked at it. We've talked about it a bunch. Unless you do a minimal Project where you leave a lot existing, where you go and you just fill the low areas in or kind of smear it around and essentially keep something close to what you have. It's still a lot of effort regardless of what the final vision is. Whether you want to make some berms or you want to make it drain north and south or east and west, you're still touching a relatively similar amount of area and a volume of material. And when you do these estimates and, and people bid these jobs, that's what they, they use to estimate the price. So Didn't find a lot of savings there. That, that's the summary of our presentation was touted. I'm happy to answer any questions and try to clarify, but we're still at a point where Having a clear vision from the committee that council's in agreement with is really paramount to Giving the engineered design, if that's what it's going to be, to its final place, you can get an accurate number.
Sure. So can you go back to that first drawing?
So this was the, the original?
Yeah. Okay, you see where that diagonal line is going through? It's gray right there. That's about right there. There's a ditch. It's not going that way. The red line is like a ditch out there.
It's like a swell, north side.
Yeah. Right. So there's, there's a ditch out there and Jesse brought this up earlier. I've been out there. And when they took the tennis court out, to be able to do that, because that is a lower area, because that was a ditch, They put some stones and rocks in it so they could get the bulldozer or whatever kind of equipment they did to dig out the tennis court. If you dig that back out, just that little part of the ditch, that goes from fourteen feet down to zero to the bay. The other side down near where the trees are and where the tennis court was and that side along those trees and bushes, because there's a fence inside there. There's a chain link fence. You can't see it. There's a little low area there. That area is really not that big. It's about fifty, maybe fifty, thirty to fifty yards circumference. That's kind of where Sally's talking about, well, put your low lying plants, your, put your bushes. So if the north side up here drains And the south side has got a little, you could, you could help it if you don't want that much water. There's no way that's going to cost a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
If I may real quick, the, our engineering stuff, I basically, there's not really a lot wrong with this drawing up and some of the elevation terrain, right? You can see there's a bridge here, bridge here, bridge here. That's because they've done berms here that drain all of the, you swell, this is swell, comes here, gets it over to this swell. All of this water here comes down through here, gets to this swell, goes to the bridge. You can see all, or just goes to the bay, I'm sorry. All of these arrows show that it drains across here and gets to this swell. So everybody goes, so everybody's making a much bigger deal about this than it really needs to be. Uh, now this is showing what twelve, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen feet in elevation here. We've already decided in, on the original documents, you could, it only showed that these berms would be one foot tall. So We're talking, I mean, that's this tall guys. A small little berm here, berm here, some berms here, berm here, and then our loop down there. And so our plan is here. The only thing that needs to be changed are a few of these elevations. Uh, we already have four hundred cubic yards of dirt on the site that is the pad where Drew Carruthers was going to build the house. So We've got dirt on site to do what we need to do. And in fact, building these berms that will do with the dirt, Later we'll have to come back and cover those with soil. Some of you guys know the difference between dirt and soil, that will actually do the planting. So we end up with about an eighteen inch tall berm. But in fact, the matter is, we engineered just like this, the, the drainage swales are shown here, bridges to allow that water. Basically, what we have, we have north side, south side swell that takes everything to the bay. Uh, and then these smaller swales and the bridges allow that water to get to those swales.
Okay, so, so let me ask a question. We're talking about one foot berms, but, but is that from existing grade or is that from after we leveled that grade?
Well, that's a, that's a great question. Um, wasn't really well defined at the beginning of the project. In our effort, We tried to leave the non-berm areas as close to existing grade as we can. So that was
If those areas right now are a foot low, we're talking about filling that with a two foot pile of dirt. Because we're already filling two, a foot and then you want a foot berm on top of that, right?
Well, we would like to stick with the existing topography that we've got there. And to the ADA issues, Greg Businelli, Uh, who was on our task force and actually right now consults with us on the garden and on this project, Tells me, he goes, Jesse, it's not slopes that we have a problem. It's the roughness or smoothness. So he is totally on board with this plan, has seen it and signed off on it. So We'd like to keep the elevations that we have there, but like for instance, when I met with the dirt fell out there, I mean, this guy's been doing dirt work for sixty years. He's like, you start up here, Jesse, and you cut and you cut and you build and you build and we've got four hundred cubic yards of material sitting right here for us to utilize. And you wait and you can, you know, and we all know water runs downhill. We got to get everything to go that direction. He's like, you know, this is not rocket science. But frankly, the Norx design here, I had no problem with. We just need to change, you know, we don't need to bring
So if we go, if we go to the one foot line and we don't fill at the bay, we're still looking at a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. I mean, that's, that's the numbers we have.
The one foot berms, these are, it's hard to tell from the drawings a little bit, but these are Very large berms, you know, a hundred, two hundred feet long. So you're talking about one foot over a hundred feet. It's going to look flat. The, the one foot berms will look flat to the naked eye. So, and if, if that's what you're going for. Um, but in my opinion, if you're going to do the berms at all, you might as well go with the two foot because it's only ten thousand dollars more and You'll actually be able to at least tell that there's berms there rather than just
The problem is when we, you try to do plants in a two foot berm, you lose water. So we'd lose a lot of water when you've got that much. When it rains, you think that we're going to get too much runoff. We wanted to actually capture the water and help water our plants. So there's actually A thought process that goes into, you know, how tall these berms are.
And why do the berms at all then at that point?
Mr. Mayor, to answer your question more directly, you didn't really get a chance there. The, the zero point and the starting point is, is an interesting concept if you want to try to save money. You could lower the whole site. You can say, hey, we're willing to lower the whole site six inches. And it's, and move it around. It's just, that's a, that's a serious decision to make. You know, we, we would need direction on that. If that's the route you want to go and say, hey, we're going to, we're going to say the new, the new starting point is So far, far below and you're willing to accept lowering the property. That's just very atypical. And in this process, as it has to go through engineering, you know, through the procurement process, It's going to be hard, you're going to be hard pressed to find any engineer that's going to buy off on Taking a site like that and not grubbing it to some extent, which is removing the top four inches of soil. And in, in all of these plans, we've gone in and removed the top four inches Grass and soil, some of the vegetation, and then gone in and refilled it. So all of those are decisions that this committee and council can make to affect the price, but we'll need direction on that.
That was my point. We're taking it down to the lowest
Possible level and then starting our berm process. You know, that's going to be more costly.
We, we don't want to remove the soil that's there. That's another thing. We got the top soil there. There's nothing wrong with what we have there. We have so much great stuff to work with. Everybody want to add this and add this, you know, when you have this kind of elevation change from one end to the other, We don't need to be bringing in any, any more material. And that was the cost drive.
Again
One, one thing to note, the, the vast majority of the property is completely flat. It's, it's the, the end towards the bay that slopes. You can see that the contours, that's the part that slopes off, but I would say seventy-five percent of the property, you know, uh, other than the pad, I mean, the pad's flat too, but the, the stuff behind, all the land behind the pad, that's, that's completely flat. So If you actually want that to slope and not pond, you're going to have to bring soil in.
No.
And if you bring it in on top of the existing grade, it's going to become lumpy. So it depends if you, if, If you want something that basically looks like what you have now, just a little less lumpy, then don't rub it and just bring in fill on top of what you have. But if you want something that Will look level and
See, that's not what we want. That's not exactly, there's something to be a disconnect. We don't want level. We want lumpy hill. We want, you know
Okay, yeah, but the lumpy hills that fill with water.
That's it.
Jackie?
That's my question. I mean, we seem to be in an argument about who's, how much dirt we need and if we need more dirt. Jesse's saying there's existing dirt enough on site. I mean, that's a huge difference in cost. So are, are you saying that that can't be done with the existing dirt?
Well, it's, it's all about where you, where you start and where you want to finish and it go, and it goes back to, yes, that is a valid point. But it goes back to what you And it goes back to, yes, that is valid point, but it goes back to what you want. Not what I want. I mean, it doesn't matter what I want. I want to satisfy everyone in this room, but what do you want? Do you want lumpy, hilly, standing water? That's great. Or do you want nice, smooth, manicured, no standing water? And, you know, that's a decision that has to be made. We've heard both sides of it. I mean, that's not really my place to try to figure that out, maybe I was...
Have you ever been there?
But that's, we're confused as the engineer, trying to figure that out.
Have you been to our trails at all?
Absolutely. I grew up in Seabrook.
Okay, so, I mean, they're not perfectly manicured. They, you know, they're a little rough around here and there. I mean, something like that is kind of what we're, I think, envisioning here.
But again, and I agree with you. I mean, that's what my vision was, but that's not what their vision was when they sent us those original plans. They were finely manicured garden that you were, you know, talking about the beauty of this and everything else. Obviously, that's changed. So if that's what their direction you want, then we can go to that direction.
I don't think it's changed. I think the vision has always been there, but we never said, hey, we need to scrape the top, make it perfectly drainable all the way to the bay, and then we'll do, and then we'll put this garden in. We never said that.
Well, it's not whether you said it or not, it's what you indicated.
Maybe it was inferred, but it was never actually spoken. And then, so I really think the point is, we don't want to take four inches of good top soil out, A.
No, you can't.
B, we don't need four-foot-high berms. One foot will be totally sufficient. And so my suggestion is that Norx go back and leave the existing soil in place. Do not change the drainage to any significant degree. If you think some swales would benefit the project, great. And then we use the existing, however many square yards of pad that we've got out there.
400 cubic yards.
400 cubic yards. We make our swales, we make our berms with that product, and we move on.
Well, first of all, I think council will tell Norx what direction to go in. So that's number one. So, but secondly, you know, we need to come to a consensus on that board right there of what you're looking for. Is that the consensus?
I think we're all agreeing.
Is that the consensus?
We all agree. We all...
Because we're only going to do this one more time. We've spent a lot of money with this group right here going back and forth now. And so we're only going to do it one more time.
We all agree we do not want it scraped. We all agree we do not want big, tall, four-foot berms. We all agree. Here's something that has been brought up. The dirt that would be brought in is clay, gumbo, whatnot. That's not good for planting things in, so that's probably not the best stuff for us to be trying to work with. I just dealt with it. I'm not sure if the trees are going to grow or not, but we'll find out. The other thing is, I live right next to this piece of property. If we get rain, it's pebbly. We get rain in January and February. The rest of the time, Clear Lake City gets rain, the east side of 146 gets rain, but our little point up there goes dry for two to three months. And rain is not a problem. You know, flooding on this property will not be a problem except in January and February when people really don't like to walk the trails that much anyway.
Okay, I really think what we'd like to see, you made your statement, we've seen an informal approval, let's make a, I would suggest you make a formal motion that you present to council and vote on it. And now we've got something we can go for.
I have one clarification before we ask...
A consensus for one, or we want to go for council review.
All right, the, if we're going to have one-foot berms, we're going to have to disturb topsoil. That's just the way it goes. You can't, if we're going to have one-foot-high berms, we're going to have to disturb topsoil. If council approves moving forward with the one-foot berms, the layout that we have right here, is there anything else that you guys are going to come back to us and ask funding for except for plants to put in the ground?
There's a complete budget in the package for...
I know, I know. What I'm looking for is between, because this does not include the trails or it does? This does not include the trails, just the berms. There was a comment earlier about bringing in topsoil on top of the berms to make them 18 inches instead of 12 inches. What is the real plan for that because...
That would be later during planting. We'd have to bring in a good quality topsoil that the plants would be planted in, so that's a different thing.
Okay, and that's what I'm trying to get to. Between now and plants in the ground and pretty flowers we can walk on trails and look at, what else do we have to come up with?
Well, I don't have it in front of me, but we have our budget and phases that was put forth in the original task force. I'm sure all needs to be updated at this point, which I'm happy to do now, but we have some direction. Two hours ago, I didn't know if we were going to do this project at all, so I didn't want to spend any more time on it, so.
I think from up here, we want to do this project.
I'm very happy. Let me tell you.
It's been dragging for terribly too long. Let's find a way to move forward.
I think, I'm happy, I think the entire group is happy. A couple of things I think could be solved much easier than trying to do this in a group. If a couple of us or if Alex wanted to get with our group at our next meeting and let us just stand around, we've got a plan that's about that size, and just say, here's what we like, here we don't. Can you draw it up like this, Alex? Let council take a look at this. If we all, and then we put that out for a request for a project.
Well, again, council needs to be...
But we need to be allowed input on it. We weren't allowed input on any of this. And it wasn't till after it was posted when I said, hey, there's a problem here, and then it was too late, so.
As the chair of the committee, I'm happy to go in front of council on their behalf to just make any discussions so that we don't...
Well, again, I think we need a consensus from you as to what you want this project to be so we can pass it on to the engineers.
I think we all just agree.
The engineers, from what I understand, have done what you're asking for. We got a one-foot berm.
I could work from this.
And you've seen the cost, though. Is that the cost that you're looking at?
The costs aren't realistic, so I think we can do better on costs, so.
So we're going to go to bid with this set of plans with the one-foot berms?
I have something that still needs to be clarified. Appreciate you trying to get to a good direction here. Probably the biggest elephant in the room is the fill, is what soil you're going to use, and what about disturbing the existing topsoil? That's a, that really hasn't been answered. There is an existing, say there's three or four inches of topsoil and there's a carpet grass out there, right? If you are going to put a one-foot berm in, that is going to be, it is going to be disturbed 100% to place these berms. It is absolutely going to be done. Typically, that's done, it's called grubbing. You go and you scrape it off. Some good contractors can go and they can turn the pile and they can shake some of the dirt out and they can reuse some of it and repurpose it and haul off the vegetation, which is just grass at this point. We did account for some of that. We still don't really understand, I still don't understand what the direction is because at this time it seems like you're wanting us to leave the topsoil, leave the grass and just put dirt on top of it.
Yeah.
And that's, which is a way to do it, but I don't think that's something an engineer's going to buy off on. And that's kind of where we're stuck and that affects this project massively because that's a huge amount of the fill and cut and that's our huge percentage of the cost.
May I suggest that we have another meeting? Our board have another meeting. Let us work out our details exact and with Alex's input, what exactly he needs. And I know now we're a little closer now. We used to have this big. Now our target's much smaller. And let us work on our details. We will finalize that into a document, run that past Alex if that's what he needs to go, get it run in by you guys. Does that sound like a workable deal, Chairman?
Sean, is that all right? Is that...
Yeah, I mean, I think that's perfect. I mean, I think that's where we're at at this point, Tom. I think we're back to let's discuss the plan and get a plan in place so that everybody's on the same page. You guys are blessing it and then we can send it out the bid and we'll go through the same bid process as we went through before. I think we're on the right track to get the project moving again, which is where we need to be. We just all need to get a table, get a consensus of, because from staff's perspective, this is an operation for us. So it's like any other project, the wastewater treatment plan or anything else. Once you give us the engineered plan, engineered design, we're going to send it out the bid. We're going to get the project done, just like we do any other project that we get done. So it's just a matter of coming to a consensus so we can get the drawings, so we can build the project. So I think it's, this is all plausible and it's a positive thing when we're moving forward.
Okay.
So absolutely.
Are we good with that? Is everybody on, is everybody on your board good with that? And counsel?
The only thing I want to make sure is that when you come up with your final plan is that it is presented as a formal resolution that you will vote upon and be, and that vote is recorded. So we don't have, oh, I didn't agree to it, or I didn't know, or whatever. So that you're all in unison, so that we, that's what we would hear.
Well, it just has to be majority in unison.
Now, are we able to work with the engineers to get, to help refine?
The engineer can, well, it's up, the engineer...
We can get an hour of Alex's time in our meeting where we can stand around the table and scratch with it.
I am, we're happy to work with you guys. I don't think it's going to be that intense. I think we just need a few key questions answered and maybe we develop those thoughts.
Are you good with it, Alex?
Yeah, we're fine with it. And so you guys know, we've been trying to keep the cost under control because we're friends of the city. You know, I grew up here. Sean called and said, hey, can you help us out? We're not, we're not even charging like normal engineering rates for this type of thing at this point because we know you're cost-conscious. So, yeah, we're happy to work with you. Would like to see it get done.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so we kind of have a consensus. There's nothing really to vote on then if you guys are going to meet again. So are we, any more discussion?
No, but one last thing. I like this. We were able to sit, you could ask questions directly to the people, and I like that we discussed it because it got a little contentious back there. And then, you know, hey, got to settle down, think it out, and we worked it out. And so, you know, after you talk and you get to where everybody's understanding what you're trying to do, it's a lot better. So I like this system because I wouldn't have been happy in the beginning, but I'm actually pretty happy now because it looks like it's, this can actually work out.[1685.85]